Commission today, August the 9th, 2016, at 6:00 PM. We can rise for an invocation. Mr. Arjuna, can you lead us in an invocation? I'm sorry, I've got our pastor, Delagarza, present. Sorry about that again.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we just come before you in the presence of these members of the city of San Juan, and we ask for your guidance, we ask for your mercy, for your wisdom. We pray for these officials that represent the city and the community, and all their workers, and we pray for the petitions that are to be called, to discuss. And so we pray for your Holy Spirit to lead the decisions that are made for the whole of this community. We thank you for blessing these members. We thank you for blessing them with gifts and abilities and talents. And so let us use them for the whole good, for that is your petition or that is your request to us. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. We can face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the government, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, all may be seated. Under public comments, we have Mr. Daniel Ramírez. Presentation of the National Night Out. Chief Gonzalez, you can come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. I just want to invite the Mayor and Commission and the public to our National Night Out that's coming up on the 20th. And we already made some press releases on our Twitter accounts and our social media. So we're going to have some live music. We're going to have, the whole purpose is to give out back-to-school supplies to our children in the community. So we have some kiddie rides, we're going to have free vouchers for some haircuts, and we're going to have different other projects there at the National Night Out at Mayfield Park. So we're just inviting, you know, the public to join us on a fun day and so they can spend a good day with the law enforcement in San Juan.
And also, I know that the sponsors work really hard in getting donations and getting the public and the different businesses involved.
Yes, Mayor, we want to thank all our sponsors.
Yes.
And we always get a lot of support from our community and especially our sponsors. And so we want to thank them as well. And we publicly thank them for continuing our 7th Annual National Night Out. It's been a success all the time. Usually we get between 300 and 400 kids show up for the school supplies. And of course, all this is done through donations. And I think it's a great partnership that we have with the San Juan Crime Stop and the community and all our businesses. And so we're asking all our residents to join us for a National Night Out on the 20th.
Absolutely, and you usually get about 1,000 backpacks.
Yes, we do, we do. We have a lot of school supplies and so we welcome everybody.
Everybody, all the kids.
Yeah, so we have a lot of other giveaways that we're going to be giving out as well. So we're just very thankful that, hopefully, the weather will not be that hot. But we know it's in August, so we're hoping that we donate late at that time so people can enjoy themselves.
If I think those gentlemen there want to know if you all are going to have a dunking booth to dunk a cop in water or something.
Yeah, we're going to have some, you know, play with a cop and a ball, you know, like a game or so. So we tried that a couple of years ago.
Yeah. A pie in the face, one of those games, you know?
Yeah, it just didn't work out for us back then, so nobody wanted to volunteer.
I prefer the hugs for the officers that Westlake goes down.
Yeah, I'd rather give hugs and love, you know?
Thank you.
Chief, last year, did we have it for two hours as well? Or for some reason, I thought it was longer?
No, it's longer because there's a movie show. A one-show, Angry Birds. So the movie extends it to a longer time.
So the movie is at what, 8:30?
Yes, so it's going to be probably until 10:30 or 11:00 or so. So we get a lot of people showing up for that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Under V, presentation on the Pony Baseball 1-4-U Zone Runner-Up. Armando Ponce, if you can come forward for those introductions. I know we've got a place full of kids, baseball players here.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Commission. It's my honor to present to you the 14-U Pony Baseball San Juan Teams, our All-Star Team. They actually were runner-up in the zone, which is kind of like a southwest region. And last week in Louisiana, they actually competed in very stiff competition. They did very well, represented the city very well, and they came in second place. So I'd like to introduce their coach, Mr. Robert Gongra, he'll go to introduce the kids.
Very good.
Before I introduce the kids, I want to say thank you to the parents that got these kids to all the tournaments. It was the practice to the tournament in Farm, McKell, and Laredo, and then Louisiana. I want to say thank you again, parents. I'm going to introduce the kids that aren't here right now so they can get recognized also. Jaime Maldonado, Marcos Pedraza, Noah Herrera, Mike Flores, and Jose Vera. Now I'm going to introduce the kids that are here.
And once you introduce them, you can have them come stand.
Sure.
That'd be good.
Jacob Lopez, Alex Pina, Omar Alcantara, Cesar Cantú, Jacob Sanchez, Jacob Gongra, Juan Zambrano, Marco Juajardo, Pablo Trevino, and my two assistant coaches that couldn't be here today because of prior commitments, Randy Herrera and Jason Santiago. This is the team that represented us.
Awesome. I think we all want to take the time, of course, to congratulate you. I'm glad that you're here to give you that recognition. I want to let you know, courtesy out of the city afar, that actually livestreamed one of your games. We were able to watch you. We thank the city afar for allowing us to have that. So we were watching you here back home and cheering for you. And congratulations, a job well done. And yes, thank you to the coaches and of course to the parents because you are as much a part of this that make it happen. So congratulations, and I know that you'll keep doing well and next time, all the way, right? Thanks for doing a great job for San Juan.
Coach, just real quick, what was the score of the last game? Brother, our brother. Good job, guys. Awesome job, guys. Way to represent, guys. Good job, brother.
Let's take a picture for them. We can get you on our website so everybody in San Juan can get to see you all around. Yeah, we'll stay back here. Can you get together here, real quick?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to add one thing before you take your picture.
Sure.
I was able, I had the pleasure of traveling with this team to Laredo, I'm sorry, to Louisiana to see their game. And I want to say that these young men were very well behaved, showed very good sportsmanship. They gave it their best. When they won, they were humble. When they lost, they were humble. I was just, you all would be very proud of them that they represented the city of San Juan.
Thank you for sharing those words and thank you for that. All right, thank you, guys. Congratulations again. Moving on in the, under presentation C, are we going to report on the Water Treatment Plant Number Two Expansion and Rehabilitation Project Update by Mr. Salinas? You can go forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I do have Mr. Mark Ramírez here from the engineering company to do the presentation report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
As you have up there on the projector, there is an update to the plant up to date. As you can see there, we have a total contract time of 410 days to final completion. The amount we've used, 185 days, which is approximately 45% of the contract time. Remaining is 225 days, which is approximately 55% of the contract time. The total amount of the project cost is 8.343 million. As you can see, billed to date, the city has only paid 4.146, 725.24 cents, which is approximately 50% of the contract. Now, do keep in mind that today, we did receive applications numbers number eight and number nine, which will add about another $600,000 that will be get billed in the next couple of weeks or so. Still approximately, the project is about 55% complete to date. As you can see there on the work update, one of the big items that we had last time, I think that was out here, contractor was having a lot of issues bringing CBNI back to the site because of the delay in six months or eight months that it was being contractors. They went ahead and scheduled all their work, so getting them back to come out here was difficult. They were looking at maybe October for them coming back. We were fortunate enough that we were able to get them back last month. So they started building the clearwell tank. I don't know if you guys have been out there yet.
Yes.
Which is pretty much complete. It's getting very close to complete, that tank. All the other structures are pretty much in place. There's some pump stations that are still missing. That work will start getting closer to completion as soon as that tank is completed. That's been holding up a lot of the other scopes. I have some other items there, the dome covers and the claricones. A lot of that equipment is being painted right now as we speak. And some other miscellaneous work they're working on. Some of the projected work that we can see there is also obviously the completion of that clearwell, which is a big item. And then the completion of coating those or painting those claricons. Installation of those dome covers should be also completed as soon as those claricons are finished, painted. And then obviously, the filters will be the next item. A lot of the underground is already in place. There's some still pending. All of that should be completed in the next month or so, I would say. And obviously, some of the electrical components that go to each one of those structures. There's a lot of, if you can, on your, like I mentioned, there's going to be a couple of pay applications becoming up here soon. And that will probably bring the amount a little bit over the 50% mark as far as the amount paid versus the amount completed. But do keep in mind that you do have a lot of equipment out there that's, you know, already being paid for. So the equipment, once it's installed, the percentage is going to increase as far as completed versus paid. So a lot, the Texas Water Development Board allows you to pay upfront for materials, in other words. So we have a lot of materials stored onsite. And a lot of that is the equipment. That's pretty much the update that we have here. As I've mentioned before, I think the previous presentation, the contractor has had a lot of struggles, you know, changing from one contract to the other. There's been a lot of hassles that they're finding out that the first contractor didn't have stuff included in their scopes, so on and so forth. So they've been dealing with a lot of those situations. It caused a lot of delays with the project.
But they're adjusting within the budget. We're not looking at change orders at this point.
No.
We don't want any.
Well, there are some smaller change orders, and there's some requests that are being provided to us to add some equipment that wasn't part of the contract originally and that the city might be looking at upgrading some of those components. Those will be change order in. There is, there are contingencies.
Are they within the?
Yeah, within the contingencies. That's what we're expecting. There wouldn't be anything from the contractor that would request changes to the city because of other reasons. It would be either stuff that wasn't part of the scope to begin with or stuff that we're finding out now that are not in the status that we originally believed because of whatever reason, time. A lot of it, you know, it's been four years since the project was preliminary design to now. So a lot of stuff happens in that timeframe. So we're finding a lot of stuff that, you know, we need to upgrade or whatnot. I'll let David bring you guys up to that.
Some of the items that we're going to be bringing back to Commission are some of the items that were value engineered out of the project back from the original bid that was above the budget. So there were some items that were value engineered that are actually semi-critical to the plant that we need to have in order for this facility to function the way it was originally designed. So all that will fall within the contingency, so it should stay within the budgeted amount. We don't see any change orders above and beyond the budgeted amount. So it'll be within the contingency numbers that are there. Plus, we're also working with Texas Water Development Board on some other projects. So there were some funds left over to see if we can move those additional funds over into this project and use it to those contingencies and address some of the other items that were value engineered out of the project to make it come within budget. So that's, so there's some of the items that we're still pending. But we won't know until we get further down the project, just in case. Because when we start working on the existing facility and we start sandblasting some of the old structure, we don't know if it's going to fall apart, if we have to replace it. How intensive is the rebuild on the old filters and the claricons that are all made of metal that we haven't been able to see the inside because we've never been able to take them down?
Right.
So we'll find out further down the road once that happens. So we're hoping, maybe on October, November timeline, that we'll start looking into that and we'll start getting better numbers to bring back to the Commission.
Very good, are there any questions?
Yes, I got one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
In reference to the completion date, I see here it's March 2017. Now, are you including, like, for instance, if there's bad weather with going down, you know, down the road? Or is it like day-to-day?
Oh, so, yeah, so the bad weather date, we have four weather days that we included into the contract. They haven't been included into the contract yet. Usually we wait until the end of the contract. When the contract time expires, we'll add those via change order on time alone. And, but yeah, if there's any rain days from this, from today on, we'll continue to add those rain days of the contract and claim at the end of the contract time.
Okay, and how often do you guys meet? As far as, you know, the, once a month?
Yes, correct.
You guys don't think you should be meeting a little bit more? Maybe twice a month or?
As construction progresses further, start getting into the rehab section, that's when we'll start probably meeting maybe twice a month or even more often than that, maybe every two weeks. Because it's going to get more critical, like I was saying. Once we start tearing down the old section of the plant, it's when a lot of the work is going to start being done. Right now, there's big sections of the plant that are being built that takes a long time, like the clearwell. It's basically just welding panels together. So it takes, it's a lot of intensive work, but there's really not a lot to report because it's only one structure being built. Once that structure gets built, then we'll be able to work around it. We couldn't work in the area because we were going to be in the way of that construction. So once it's done, we'll be able to put a lot of the additional equipment that is going to work with that, the pumps, some of the underground piping that's going to go to the clearwell and all that. That'll require a lot more meetings, a lot more coordination. So we'll start meeting more often then at that time.
On what date and time do you guys meet? You guys just pretty much pick a day and?
No, we had selected a date, but there were some conflicts. We just rescheduled it, I think.
Yeah, it's the last Thursday, the first Thursday of the month at 10:00 AM. Actually, we changed it to 8:30 AM.
8:30 AM now. It's been moved up to 8:30 AM because it was kind of delaying some of the, interfering with some of the construction. So by moving it earlier, we can move. So we've been kind of playing it by ears. Construction moves on, we may end up meeting even earlier or sooner than that to allow for the contractors to be able to stay continuously working.
But do keep in mind that monthly meeting is a requirement by the Texas Water Development Board as part of the funding of the project. Now, obviously, we're always in communication, David, myself, and the contractor as to the progress of the plant on a, you know, daily basis, pretty much. Whatever is needed, we address those as we come.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Presentation on the departmental reports for Parks and Recreation, Planning and Zoning, Memorial Library, and Sanitation. Mr. Arjuna.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners. We have the department directors with us here available. Is there, you have any questions for them?
Questions?
For sanitation, Ms. Gonzalez, how are we doing as far as the brush pickup?
We are almost complete. Right now, it looks like we're, we have a bunch of piles. But the reason why we have piles is because they're starting to clean up the area. So whatever they scoop up with the backhoe or, it's with the backhoe or the dusan, they put it into piles and then that's going to be picked up. But we're almost there. It's, it's almost.
Are we sticking to the schedule?
We're a little past the schedule. But we met with.
You gave me a schedule, that's what I'm referring to.
Talking the brush pickup?
Yes, for the brush.
Oh, for the residential?
Yes.
I think we're going to be even further along than I expected because we're on the southeast, south-northeast side right now. And I have two crews, one coming from under the expressway going north, and then I have one from Owata coming south. So they meet in the middle. One of them is already on 495, the other one is at Nolana. We're supposed to be finished by the 16th, and I think we're going to be finished before then.
I had a resident call that their brush hasn't been picked up in five months. Would that be possible?
No.
You've already covered everybody?
The only thing that I'm seeing that I don't, and it's maybe something that we need to let the residents know, I've made another crew up. And that's a crew that goes in, and they're probably talking about the alleys. They go in the alleys before the actual pickup. They do the mowing of the alley, they do the weed eating of the alley, they cut the trees. Then they put the piles aside so that when the grapple, which is the actual pickup of the brush, they come in behind them and then they start picking up the brush. So a lot of these residents are calling and telling me, well, you know what? They were out there and they missed my alley. It's not that, it's prep work before they actually do the pickup. So the whole, you know, so far, what I'm being told, and I've gone behind the guys, all the alleys, with the exception of one that's real long on the southeast, on the southeast side, has not been done. And that's what they're doing now. But the rest of them have, and they're just waiting for the grapple to come and pick them up. The grapple is supposed to be on the northeast side. They're on the northwest right now, so they're ahead of schedule also. Now, as far as the brush on the streets, no, Commissioner, because I go, when the guys go pick up, when the employees go pick up, I also make it a point of going behind them to ensure that they did pick up. What I see is that they pick up the brush and two days later, there's brush out there all over again.
And I believe this is an.
Yes, and the alleys. So that, I think with this schedule that we have, I think it's going to be real easy to maintain the alleys now.
So, Ms. Carmen, when they go and dump brush, how are we addressing that? Once they pick up and they go back?
I called, I've been calling.
And they've been going out there?
Yes.
And they've been, like, citing tickets and all that?
I don't think they're citing, but I do know that they're going behind, and they are going to the residents and speaking to the residents about when their brush schedule. I also have the guys, the grapple, the guys that actually pick up on the residential side of it, on the streets and that, I have them given out pamphlets showing when their schedules are. So this way, they're not putting them out one or two months ahead and then they're saying my brush never got picked up. And that's what's happening. They get it picked up and then two days later, they're out again. We just picked up on, about a week or so, we picked up on Nebraska, southeast. And if you go out there, there's brush out, you know, in certain sections.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. I've seen, got a lot of compliments from some of the employees when I talked to them on the streets about the organization that you have out there. And also some, the cleaning of some of the roadways and the striping. So really, tell them thank you for that work that they're doing. And of course, we're taking care of them during the real high heat time in the day, right? Okay, thank you. Any other questions on any other departments?
Mayor, I'd like to ask, if possible, Mr. David Salinas can come up and give us a status on the pressure that took over the weekend.
Mr. Salinas?
Mayor, I provided some copies on the status, the report. The first sheet that you have there's got a bunch of numbers. I don't know, we can put it up on the screen? We did provide a screen. It was just, that's just how we correlated the numbers. The important ones are the graphs. The graphs that you have there show the current consumption for August. And that red line that you see running across is the trigger level for the Stage Two Water Conservation Plan. As you can see, all of August's consumption has exceeded that trigger level. If you go back and look at the July one, which is the next graph online, over about 50% of those levels also exceeded the, the flows also exceeded the level. Now, I did provide, the next graph that's on there is the same time period last year. So you can see where we were last year during August and July. And it's the next one. That one right there. That's the 2015, that was August and July 2015. And you can see the correlation compared to July and August of this year. All of our flows last year, except for that one, were way below the trigger level. So yesterday and over the weekend, we had, besides the fact that we have a higher-than-normal demand rate right now because of the high heat, which will continue through the rest of August, we had some mechanical issues that we had to address. We had a motor that burnt out, and then we had a pump that failed. The motor has been replaced, the pump should be back tomorrow. They had to repair the impeller. It had gotten damaged with some rock and debris that got into it, so it wasn't pushing out any water. And on top of that, we also had some line failures along the way. Just in the past three weeks, four weeks, actually, we had three breaks on the raw water line that supplies water to our downtown plant, the plant number one, the one that feeds, that sits behind City Hall. And unfortunately, that really supplies the main pressure for the south side of town. So a lot of the calls that we got for low water pressure were mainly on the south side of town because we couldn't maintain the level on the south water towers. Right now, the levels are slowly going back up because it's going to take a while for us to gain momentum again. So we're coming to you all today so we can initiate, if we can't initiate Stage Two, at least Stage One, voluntary water conservation and ask the citizens through either a PSA or through the website for them to curtail some of their nonessential water usage, sort of like watering the. and ask the citizens through either a PSA or through the, through the website, for them to curtail some of their nonessential water usage, sort of like watering the grass, washing the cars. And we're not saying stop watering, just don't water during the middle of the day when there's a peak demand, uh, do it early in the morning between five to seven PM. Because we normally fill up the water towers in the evening between eight and midnight. That's when we fill up the water towers, so we'll be ready for the next day for the demand during the day. So if we start with a full water tower, it's easier to maintain it throughout the day than when it's empty. That's why it's taken us a while to get the, the pressure back up, and we still got some calls today in, in the south, south area, especially in southeast area, where we're slowly building up the pressure in that one water tank. So we're just asking for you all to authorize this, that we, we go out at least for voluntary water conservation, so we can initiate that and, and have the customers and citizens start curtailing some of their water use.
Since it's not an official, it's not really on the, uh, it's not listed on the agenda other than the report, do you, do we need to have formal action, or is that just by, by, by means of instruction?
The water conservation plan was adopted permission by ordinance, and it authorizes the city manager to initiate without-
Your recommendation is that we-
Our recommendation is that we at, at minimum initiate-
Okay.
voluntary. I would prefer stage-two, but I, I know it's, it's really hard to hit the citizens really, really quick like that, so let's get them into the mode of conserving. So let's go with, with stage-one water, uh, just voluntary, and start asking them just kinda curtail their usage. And if they have to wash the car, go to a, a public, uh, commercial car wash, because they recycle a lot of their water. So there's less lost water in that area. And if they're gonna water their grass, do it preferably between five and seven o'clock in the morning.
Would it be good, Mr. Salinas, is to make that list that you have of the and suggestions for the public and get it on our website?
Yes, I, I just, I was just bringing it over you so I can send it to Hussein, he can put it on the website, and then we can-
And, and is there any chance for, uh, maybe calling for any of the channels that could talk about the conservation?
No problem. We can, we can do that. We can-
It'd be good, so we can get word out, because I think the, the bills just went out for the water, so it's gonna be another month before we generate something, isn't it?
I, I believe we, they go out on the twenty-fifth. We have a chance to put it on the bills on the twenty-fifth this month.
But for now, between now and the time that we can reach all of the citizens?
We'll put a PSA together, so we can send to, to the media and put it also on our social media and our website.
And then you just, you give a status on where we're at, how we're sort of playing back up?
The goal right now is to curtail at least five percent. I need to get it to twenty percent. We need to save about twenty percent to get it below the, the three-point-seven trigger level. But the goal right now is five percent under the voluntary. That'll let me push back on the little pumps, so I don't, don't force the, the pressure out. That's, that's what was causing the lines to rupture. We were just pushing too much water to the lines. And, and their old lines have been in the ground since the eighties, so, so we're trying to cut back on that, so we don't, don't have any more water break. But we will, we will provide a report.
The volume of calls, bad? The volume of calls?
It, it, it was bad. Uh, it's, it's slowed down. I think we have, uh, we got about fifteen at our office. I'm not sure how many we got at City Hall, but I'm pretty sure they probably got about an average of fifteen calls today. Yesterday was extraordinary. We just got a ton of calls, and it was expected.
You were working on the problem, that's why part of the calls were there.
Correct, correct. We were working on the problem.
Nobody was without water during this period that you were having those problems.
Correct. It was, we had, we had staff out verifying that we were above the twenty PSI that's required for emergency. In fact, TCQ gave us an emergency operations order, so we could use our well, because right now, we don't have authority to use the well a hundred percent. We're working on that. We'll bring it back to commission, uh, later on this year to, to be able to use the well at a hundred percent. But we did stay above the twenty PSI that, that allowed us to continue to operate in emergency mode.
And this conservation question is just to get us back to where we were before we had our, our problems?
Correct.
At the same time, not to force them and have other, other problems created?
Now, we can't get below the three-point-seven here in the next couple of months. We will have to initiate stage-two to, to try to get back down to the three-point-seven.
What exactly is stage-two?
Stage-two is mandatory water conservation. That means you only water the lawn on the days that you're indicated, based on your address. Uh, there is no washing of sidewalks, no washing of buildings, no pressure washing, that kind of stuff. Commercial car washes will still be able to use. Uh, water features like at your house can only run if they have a recycling system on it. But other than that, it's, it's just basically you leave your water for essential uses, sort of like cooking, bathing, and sanitation.
Just for clarification, who would have the final say? Is it gonna be you to go to stage-two, or is it gonna come before us?
I will, I'll send you all an email, just to let you know that we're gonna be initiating that stage-two.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Update, E, update on the Chaparrales subdivision and Las Flores. Mr. Arjona.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, a real quick update on the Paseo de las Flores. The contractor is Barricade Construction. Uh, the bid came in at eight hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars. Uh, the notice to proceed was issued back in July seventh, two thousand sixteen. The contract that was allotted for this particular project was a hundred eighty, a hundred eighty calendar days. Uh, they've used twenty days so far. They're about eleven percent complete. Now, some, some of the beginning of the twenty days were used for surveying purposes, as they, they're doing the surveying as far as doing the work. Uh, the work update, the contractor has began laying the thirty-six reinforced concrete pipe, uh, from the Moore Road, uh, coordination with Irrigation District on the canal crossing. Uh, some of the projected work is to finish the manufacturing of the fifty-four-inch RCP, which is a reinforced concrete pipe, which will be installed along the Nebraska street and the forty-two-inch RCP along Moore Road. They're outside doing some work already. Uh, if you can see on the, on Nebraska, they already did the markings, uh, for, you know, starting on the, uh, after that, they're gonna start doing the diggings, and they're gonna start doing the installation of the RCP pipes.
Will there be any obstruction of the street at any point?
Right now, uh, is there gonna be any, sir?
Uh, there will be at some point, that's gonna be coordinated with the school district, uh, the contractor will-
Can you come to the microphone, so we can?
Uh, that will be coordinated with the school district at whatever point they start doing, uh, to that. But their intent, the contractor's intent was to partially close that road and still allow access through it. Uh, of course, we'll, we'll wait and see until they start working there, but it should be-
What part of the road's going to be affected?
It's gonna be the east side of Nebraska.
Right, from where to where?
Uh, it's, it's hard to tell. It's, I guess it's halfway between, uh, Hall Acres and Moore Road, somewhere about, there's a starting point-
Further south?
On the starting point, yeah, all the way to, to Moore Road. Yes.
Alright, and then it's inside within the subdivision?
Uh, there's a portion of the road, uh, geez, I can't remember the name of that road on the subdivision. But on the, on the west side of the subdivision, uh, because we're gonna be running that thirty-six inch line all the way to, to the back end of that subdivision, there's gonna be some of that work in there. Uh, of course, most of that can be coordinated and allow traffic to go through the other street, so it shouldn't be that big of a, of a problem as far as, um, traffic.
I guess as soon as you get to those areas, and we've talked about it, you weren't here, but making sure that staff is notified, so we can notify the residents, or you do, do you do the notifications?
No, the contractor will do the notifications, and, and I have instructions to not, uh, notify the city, uh, directly. They do have contact, uh, information for the chief police, uh, fire department, what have you. They do have all the information, uh, that was provided to them, so they can coordinate with the city as well.
Alright, thank you. Questions for, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Arjona, I'm gonna ask you on the Chaparrales. I know that there's a section of street, and I believe the, your memo said they're gonna start that section first, because of the school coming up as well.
Yes, as a matter of fact, uh-
What is that? Are you coordinating with the county also?
They're coordinating with the county, coordinating with the school district, so they're hoping that they will finish whatever they're gonna be doing before the school starts.
So, so when you say anything they're doing, just the part that is part of the Chaparrales, but the rest of Sargento, with the county?
Right, they're, they're- Well, they're coordinating that with the county, so that whenever they're start, ready for the, uh, for the asphalt, it'll be in conjunction with them. They're gonna do their part, Garko's gonna do their part.
So are we stating that the county's gonna take up the cost? Not the county taking the cost, we're gonna use the, the county to do the part that that company was gonna do before?
The Garko company's gonna do that paving, the section that belongs to them.
Okay, it couldn't coordinate it with the county? Because we're gonna have a cost savings of about a hundred and fifty thousand?
The, it, it was gonna be, the, the thing was that the county really didn't wanna do that, because they were saying that at the end, if, if something were to happen to the street, they were gonna be pointing fingers. So Garko was saying that it was better for them to take care of it, as they were doing the, uh, the preparation for the asphalt and the asphalt altogether. So they, they were in agreement that, you know what, let us do our thing, and you guys can do your thing.
And the part that they're doing is still different than what was initially proposed. Is that not correct?
It, it's a difference.
The, the, the paving of that area is not gonna be the wider, it's gonna be-
No, 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 it's just gonna be those two lanes. It was initially proposed before.
Okay, so there is a cost reduction anyway?
There is a cost reduction.
Do you know what that amount is?
Well, it was, uh, the, uh, the project cost was, was at the one-point-three million estimated?
Correct.
And they came in at five-eighty-five.
Correct.
So it's about six-hundred thousand dollars that cost saving.
Right, no, I understand, on the overall project, but the part that's the street, even that came in to be less. Did they, did they bid it at just a two lane, or did they bid it at?
Two lane.
Okay, so it got changed for bidding for two lane, not, not the other one?
No, not for the four lane, it was a two lane.
Okay, so it's already incorporated?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the, uh, the notice to proceed was back in July twenty-eighth. Uh, they're, they're being working at it. As, as of yesterday, they, they got the RCPs already in line, and they're digging, uh, they're, they're moving real fast on that, on that section.
So will, will the street within the subdivision also be torn up, the one that leads into the back to Las Bretches?
There's gonna be part of it, right? Yes.
Yeah, which one? Is it two streets? Las Bretches that runs east and west? So bringing it out, there's nothing being brought out to the street?
Which street I'm trying to-
Okay, let's, where's, I thought you had gone, so the, the Chaparrales. We have Las Bretches, which is the one that has the most of the flooding, which is the, the very last street that goes east and west in the subdivision?
Yes, on the very last street, the west side, uh, there's only a portion right there where the cul-de-sac area is at. Uh, I would say about maybe a hundred and twenty feet going east, that will be, uh, uh, I guess, construction's gonna happen. The rest of it is, it's, it's gonna be okay. Uh-
So there's nothing leading from that cul-de-sac to Sargento, Trevino?
If, yeah, that, that whole, I can't remember the name of that street that goes north, uh, but it's from Sargento Trevino all the way to the end of the subdivision. That whole street, we're putting in a new line, a new storm line, and that whole street's gonna be repaved.
Okay, so it's just the cul-de-sac that part of the street?
Correct, and then the street that's before that, uh, in the middle of the subdivision, we're going east, uh, towards the end of the subdivision as well.
Alright.
And that section, just to give you a, a better update, that section, uh, if I'm correct, uh, the contractor has already laid out most of the pipe on Sargento Trevino. So they've, they've laid that out, and they're getting to, they're getting ready to get started on the, going into the subdivision as we speak.
Okay, and that, too, will take coordination with the, um, the school district as well. I don't know if they use that still as a route into the old, uh, into the new schools off of four ninety-five, so-
Okay, yeah.
Making them aware, if they pick up children around that area.
One of the things that I do contract about up to date to us was, uh, I know the city was trying to, uh, get a testing laboratory for soils. Uh, since they already laid down that line, uh, they would like to start testing that backfill on that line, so that we can get ready for the pavement as well.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if the city has already, uh, acquired services with the test lab?
We have that.
I guess as soon as we get, that would be good, too.
Wait time for working out, so that they can-
Like I said, I think if they laid that line already, they, they don't, I think they could probably start testing that trench and make that trench is, is good for paving and then-
Do that within the next couple of days.
And that can be done administratively through the project?
Right.
Okay, alright, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, Mr. Arjona?
No, ma'am.
Okay, update on the, uh, Labor Standards Act? Mr. Arjona?
Yes, uh, Mayor Commissioners, there's a new law, you know, legal.
Okay, some diff, so you'll talk to us how that's gonna affect the budget? I, my concern is that we take it into consideration during the budget time. Alright, so we, no action? Alright, under G, discussion and consider proposed tax rate for the city as on one, for fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand sixteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and setting public hearings. Mr. Garza.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Our calculation that we submitted a couple of weeks ago just came back. Right here, I prepared a chart that includes the numbers from last year to fifteen, and it was from two thousand sixteen. If you notice, uh, our tax of value last year was eight-hundred-and-sixteen million, and compared to two thousand sixteen, our tax of value is gonna be a hundred-and-fifteen million. So that's good, because we are actually showing an increase in property tax value of three, thirty-four million. So on, based on our calculation that we submitted to the county, our effective tax rate for the year of two thousand sixteen, it's gonna be point sixty-eight forty-five. Our last year current tax, and our current tax rate, it's point six-nine-nine-three, which if we keep our last year and current tax rate, it's gonna, it's gonna bring over an additional tax levy of a hundred, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, um, for the whole year. Uh, that's the one that we're gonna be proposing, myself and the city manager, to keep the same taxes last year at point six-nine-nine-three. And as I said, I mean, that's gonna bring up revenues of a hundred, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, eight fifty-four.
Good, that's good.
Questions? Okay, Mr. Garza, on the, um, amount that you've quoted that we would have by using the proposed, uh, current tax rate, uh, Mr. Vela spoke to us regarding, uh, refinancing and monies becoming available, correct?
Yes, that is, Mayor, and actually, if we keep the same rate as last year, we can go ahead, our new money capacity, it's gonna be one-point-two million. That's what we can go ahead and request, uh, for a bond.
So the only thing we could generate would be two million?
One-point-two million, that's it. Now, I'm, I'm actually comparing in case, I mean, if we increase the taxes by one cent, we're gonna be able to request new money capacity of two-point-four million. And then, and if we increase the taxes by two cent, that's gonna give us the opportunity to request four million, new money capacity, four million.
Four million?
Correct.
Now, Mr. Arjona, what, what was the amount of those totaling of the streets that, um, Mr. Garza had, had talked about, the ones that were the-
The serious conditions?
The serious, that had to be done immediately?
I wanna say it was about eight million.
Eight million?
Yeah, I think it was something like, but, you know, uh, in that, in that regards, the, uh, the monies that, that he proposed, or the, the quantity of monies that he proposed was a little bit, uh, I guess, uh, not there. I mean, he's supposed to give us a better pricing, uh, but the gentleman is out on vacations, and he will be back to next week to give us a better price or better estimate. I know he was quoting at seventy-five, if I'm not mistaken. He came back and said, you know what, we can probably do that a lot cheaper than the seventy-five. And he got that seventy-five dollars based on the, the study that the university did. Uh, but he, he contacted a few contractors, paving contractors, and they're saying that that was way too off. So we're hoping that it's anywhere between the figures of maybe fifty or fifty-seven dollar range.
And what would that make this?
I, I didn't get the calculation on that, Mayor.
Okay, so there was, there was several levels that he had. There was a level of the streets that-
Serious.
Serious, but I don't remember being eight million.
The, the level, and the level of serious was four million, and then the, the other level that he went, went to eight million. And if you were to do all of them, there was twelve million.
Twelve million, all of them together. But the serious condition, I think, uh, it was four, with the other one was another four.
Four-point-three or something like that.
Right. But the ones that, the ones that really, really need the, um, you know, the repaving, that section, the serious section is, he came in at four something. So if, um-
That would be like Cancun and Puerto Vallarta, there was, there's no, no streets.
The ones that have no asphalt whatsoever.
The only thing that he didn't have was that if there was a pipe or something that was deteriorated in between the street, that it was not taken into consideration at this kind of price at four million?
Right.
That might increase it at some, sometime.
And that was his point, that, uh, he said that just by looking at it, we can see or determine whether there may need to be any type of drainage improvements. I mean, if, if, if there's drainage improvements needed, and we just overlay or redo the street, within a couple of years, I mean, that street is gonna be gone as well. So we need to not only take into consideration the fact that, yes, we need to repave the streets, but also look into the drainage improvements if there's any needed. So if that is, if that is the case, uh, you know, the cost is gonna be a little bit more. But that's something that he will need to do later.
When is he coming back?
Last week, uh, he said a couple of weeks, so I'm hoping that next week he'll be back.
Now, tell me a little bit about the, uh, police station. I know that, um, we had the final presentation some time back. I don't know where Chief is. Chief, have any of the forfeiture monies that we spoke about, uh, come in yet?
Mayor, uh, Commissioner, we have had additional forfeiture money come in. Not significantly, but, um, a couple, uh, we probably have like thirty or forty thousand that came in these past couple of months.
And so, what's the estimate that we were looking at that needed, that, besides the forfeiture money, which, uh, you have, and it's been encumbered for the police station, what is the difference, the gap between that?
We currently have one-point-three million for the service station, and I believe the project was gonna be pretty close to two million.
So about seven-hundred thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, some of the, um, some of the items that were, you know, what we had over, one of the discussions was at about one-point-six, one-point-seven. But that was, that's because there were some items that were pulled out, hoping that the city could actually do them ourselves. But that doesn't mean that we don't need those monies. I mean, the funding is needed, so yes, it's about right, it's about- I mean, the funding is needed, so yes, it's about right, it's about maybe close to two million dollars altogether.
So we, but from our part, it'd be about, that is not there yet, it's about seven hundred thousand, that the city would need to do, to complete it?
Correct.
Okay, so if we keep the current rate, we would be able to generate one point two million?
That is correct, yes.
And with the critical streets and the, um, the, uh, police station, we are at four point seven million. If we did, the, the, because the police station is really ready to go because we've done all the legwork and, uh, we've got all of that done. We were to deduct the seven hundred thousand, then we would be at about, uh, what is it, five hundred?
Out of the four point four?
I think it's at one point two, right?
One point two, yes, that's the.
Oh, we would generate by refunding, refinancing, so we would have hundred thousand left. We wouldn't be able to do any much in street work. I'm gonna hear the thoughts of the commission. With those kinds of needs, what would we need to do?
Mr. Garza, looking at, looking at this chart that you worked on, so the taxable value is eight hundred and sixteen million, correct? It increased this year to eight hundred and fifty.
Correct.
Now, we're just, we're just talking about the value.
Correct.
How did, uh, the tax increase, what we collected?
What we collected?
Yeah, the amount of tax money that we collected, does it show up there from last year to this year?
From last year, year, n- no.
It's not there?
It's pretty close to six million, which, yes, which is, which is pretty close to the five point seven, right in two thousand fifteen. That's the actual tax levy that we were able to collect last year.
And how much did it increase by?
If we keep the current rate at point six nine three, that's gonna give us an additional tax levy of a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I'm talking about from two, twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen.
Okay.
How much did it increase by?
Like?
What was collected?
What was collected, it's gonna be pretty close to probably five point nine.
Five point nine?
Yeah, five point nine, five point nine. That's what we're gonna end up collecting this year.
Last year that was collected and this year that was collected?
Correct.
Five point nine million?
Correct.
Okay, so that, so it's a big difference. Alright, um, if we leave it the same. It really doesn't stay, I mean, it's the, 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 we're still gonna increase what we collect, right? Because of new homes that are being built, because of, uh, improvements that are done.
Hopefully, yes, by this year to the next one, I see an increase.
So there is gonna be an increase. And so the, the county is, is proposing a sixty-eight, point sixty-eight forty-five?
That's the calculation we submitted to the county, and that's, that's the effective tax rate calculation that came out, yes, point sixty-eight forty-five.
So if we go with that effective rate, we're actually reducing it?
That is correct, yes.
By a, by a cent?
Correct.
More or less?
A little bit less.
Your recommendation, Mr. Garza, is that we stay the same?
My recommendation would be to stay the same. I mean, that's gonna give us an additional hundred and twenty-five thousand on tax levy, and then we can go and request for the new money, one point two million. I don't know how much we can cover from the projects that we have in the future, but, I mean, in order for us not to increase it, I mean, that's the only option we have, right? And then I, I wanna show you also on the effects on an eighty thousand, uh, dollar household, the effect on an increase on one cent, it's gonna be eight dollars a year. And then an effect on two cents increase, it's gonna be sixteen, sixteen dollars a year.
Or property value at what level?
Property value at eighty thousand. Yeah, a hundred thousand, it's gonna be ten dollars a year, and twenty thousand, if we increase it by two cents. I mean, so, I'm sorry, twenty dollars if we increase it by two cents a year.
And this tax rate, you will not find out until the end of August, right? Because July was the, the, the dead time for appeals, and the final number comes towards August, so you can make, you know, you can show your, your raise to the state, or your budget by the state. At the end of August or September. That doesn't mean it's not gonna change that much. If it does, it's very little, but, you know.
So aside from the seven hundred to, to try to get the police station going, we would only be left with five hundred thousand for maybe a street or two.
That is correct, yes. If we keep the same taxes last year, yes.
You just got, you know, in my opinion, you gotta take, you know, in consideration that eight, eight dollars, you know, compared to when you damage your car. And there's a lot of these streets that people need that, that assistance, you know? And I'm in favor of, of picking up the one cent or two cent, only in the condition that you earmark those two cents from now to ever, to be designated for streets, street improvements only. Because this is not gonna be something that you're gonna finish in one-year project, this is gonna have to look into, uh, five to ten-year, uh, project, you know? You know how much a tire costs you, you know, seventy, eighty dollars, you know, uh, but that's up to everybody taking consideration.
Yeah, actually, this money and these calculations on the new money capacity, it's based that that one cent, it's gonna go to the debt service account. So it's gonna be allocated for street projects or whatever you need to do. The same thing we.
Or whatever we need.
Correct.
Or whatever, that's the key word, or whatever.
So that, there's no way to earmark it just for streets?
Yeah, sure. I mean, we're gonna be allocating that money, I mean, for, for debt service. I mean, it's not gonna stay in the general fund.
I'm sorry, the allocation of the monies is for debt service, and it'll be up to the, to decide for what projects, in this case, we're saying, we're talking about the streets. So that either the one cent or the two cents will be destined only for, for street improvements or street repairs.
Yep, you know, you know, what I wanna assure is that if you were to increase, definitely it's just for streets, you know, you, you don't wanna mislist the public. You're gonna go to debt service, and then tomorrow, somebody comes and says, okay, those two cents goes for, you know, this or that, you know? Then there's no, no reason why to increase. The only reason to increase is to better our streets, you know? And those streets have been deteriorating, not for one year, but for ten, fifteen years in the back, you know, we gotta catch up. And that, and you gotta make a, a plan and a ten-year plan. And if we have to set a committee and bring business people, bring the community so they can see where that money's going, so let's do it, you know? Or unless the commission is favored not to, to leave the streets there, we're gonna continue doing the potholes and we're not gonna catch up, you know? We can even come back some next meeting and have an open meeting so we can have the public voice their opinion, you know? To me, that would give me a, a reason to say, hey, they're the ones saying they want it, because they're the ones who're gonna be complaining when they hit those potholes, or when it rains and that pothole gets bigger, and we can't catch up with those potholes.
I have a suggestion. One point two million, we know we can get, and will be funded through the, um, additional increase in valuations.
Correct.
And so, uh, according to Mr. Vela, we can do the bar, we can go ahead and do the refinancing, and we would be fine in being able to pay this, uh, increase. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we would have one point two.
Correct.
We know right now from our discussion that we just saved about seven hundred thousand on Las Brechas. Let's say six hundred thousand to be conservative. That's one point eight. We talked about the enterprise fund and being able to borrow through the city. The enterprise fund is, in our discussion in the last budget meeting, you mentioned that we would need about six months' worth, uh, to be in the reserve like we do in the regular city, so that for any emergency. That would equal about a million?
A million, one point two million.
Okay, one point two million. Okay, so let's leave the one point two million out of the three million plus. Being able to borrow the two to two point million, the maximum that we can by leaving the amount, which would be two point two million. We set it up so that we are finding a resource, a source that we can create through borrowing through this. We pay it back through the vehicle that allows us to be able to tax against the services provided, not to the people, but within the city. That would give us four million, and we would never raise taxes.
That's another option?
So what I'd like to, for you to explore, if, and I agree with Mr. Garcia, that we cannot make it on one point two million. We need to do that police station because in tomorrow's dollars, it's gonna be way more than what it is today. The need from our people, consistently our streets, we cannot ignore it. We could do nothing with seven hundred or five hundred thousand, except maybe one or two streets, and those folks will be fine. But we've got, according to this engineer, three million that are in critical condition, that must be addressed. And of course, I always have hope, as when it comes to, uh, this EDC will definitely is starting to be in the black. Uh, I believe that through the leadership of that board, we're gonna be, uh, getting some businesses that are already coming. And so maybe our goal, and we talked about in strategic plan, is that this, we're going to fund things through the sales tax, not through property tax. So that's the goal that we have to be working on. If we can pull this off, we can actually be able to fund four million without raising the tax. And then concentrate on the monies that we have to, through, through the EDC, to begin some kind of generation of funds, extra funds. And we have a few businesses that already, uh, are coming in that we know. And that increase, we're now at, how much are we, are we getting through, uh, sales tax?
The EDC?
On the EDC, on a monthly?
Estimated between sixty and seventy thousand.
Okay, sixty to seventy thousand. And at this point, we're able to keep some of that now into the reserves, is that correct?
Yes.
We are, we're starting to clear our expenses?
Correct.
And, uh, we, and I know that the board took action to, um, start looking for a director. We're gonna fund the director. So I'd like for, um, I wanna make a recommendation to the commission that we adopt the, the rate, the current rate for the upcoming. We also have not balanced our budget, though. Is that correct?
No, no, we, we still need to cut down at more or less one point nine million on our general fund. We're struggling to, to do that, so.
It has to be balanced, and I know that we haven't, uh, come up with the amount to, for our employees. I know there's been, uh, different conversations that we've had about that. I'd like for the, uh, department heads to be looking at your budgets. Because whatever, we're gonna have to be, um, balanced. So whatever increase is gonna have to come from the existing budgets that you have, um, for any kind of, uh, incre- we did a one point five last year. So we need to go and take a look at the budgets to see what can be, um, you know, getting to, to the basic, to be able to allow us to consider. I know you provided the one, the two, and the three, but realistically speaking, uh, we wanna look at that. I know some of you all are talking about, that I have heard, talking about, uh, an adjustment on the initial, um, starting rate. Um, I think that's far from us still. I believe we need to do something for employees. But the impact that that would have, you need to study through a consultant, and I really want us to move on to consultant to be able to look at the payment plan, so that we can get everybody back on the plan that we used to have, that we designed, that's supposed to work. So I'd like that revisited, and I don't know that it's going to impact us in this budget, but I wanna make sure that by the next one it does. And then, um, looking at, when you get it before us at the next meeting, uh, again, we'll visit, once you all have worked on, on the balancing, to see what we can afford for our, uh, to be able to give our employees some, a cost of living adjustment, until we're able to do the, the actual, um, wage, uh, review and assignment. Taking again into consideration a new factor. The new factor is, I know Ms. Cordillo's not here, but this law that is coming to effect, that's going to play, uh, a part when it comes to overtime. And that has, that's mandated, and when does that come into effect?
I believe it's in December. I don't remember the date, it was.
December first.
The first.
Okay. So we have to be planning it now for the December first?
Yes.
So that the, the folks that do a lot of the overtime, like our officers and our firefighters, are adjusting that as of now, either be through getting extra, you know, our, um, firefighter or police officers, we don't have that kind of overtime? Or being very limited, or, or through the grants that you get, Chief. Uh, do you get grants also, Chief Garza, for overtime?
No, ma'am.
Those are not available for the firefighters? Okay.
Mayor, one, one thing, uh, uh, when we're talking to taxes, we increase, all senior citizens at sixty-five, they are already frozen their taxes. That doesn't increase their taxes. So that means that, that all senior citizens will not have an increase if you were to increase the tax.
If they own the property?
Yeah, if, if they're, if they're.
They own the property, yes, correct.
Free, if they're frozen at sixty-five.
Correct.
The only way that the pro, their, their taxes go over is that the property value increases. That's the only way that those taxes change for any senior citizen. And I know that eight dollars and sixteen dollars for a senior citizen, it's hard, so I understand that. But, you know, we also know that they, they're frozen, so more likely it wouldn't affect them in that way.
That's a very good point. If, if we were to, to say that tonight we take a vote and we keep the effective tax rate, gives us time to take a look at this. If we were to have, and I like the idea of having a public, uh, hall, a town hall meeting, to talk to the folks, so we can show them what the needs are and be able to discuss that, can we come back and revisit that rate?
Actually, this time, you need to vote for the recommendation or whatever you're gonna be recommending, and we need to set up the two public hearings.
Okay.
One, it's gonna be on August the twenty-third.
Okay.
Uh, that's a regular commission meeting, and the other one, it's gonna be on August the thirty, which that one is gonna be on a special call meeting.
Okay, and it has to be done within the regular meeting, so we could do like something right before the meeting and then call it as a public hearing in the meeting?
Correct.
Yes?
Yes.
And at that time, if there was, you know, we look at the, um, responses from the public, because if we can tell them, you know, we can do two miles of streets versus maybe four miles. If we did a cent and the folks are stating to us, these are the, the critical needs, and we're able to explain it, and they say, you know, we can definitely consider that, we would be able to revisit. Is that correct? Okay, so.
And, and at any time, if you can invite Orlando Garza from the appraisal district, he can answer most of the questions and can make sure that, he's the one who handles the appraisals. So he'll know what's gonna increase and how it affects senior citizen or any disability, uh, taxpayer.
You know, and, and that's one of the suggestions I was gonna make as well, is pretty much kinda balance out the budget first, and then have, uh, a, a meeting with, I guess, town hall meeting. But also, we need to keep, uh, in mind that today, the, uh, in the county commissioners' court, the, the hospital district passed, okay? So that's something that I want the commission to also think about. At this point, it got approved, and it's gonna be on the ballot come November. So that, that plays a factor in all this as well. So I just wanna make sure that everybody, you know, knows that, that's something that not only, I mean, all of Hidallo County citizens are, are gonna be, are, are gonna decide where we're gonna go with this, okay, so.
So again, recommendation, we keep, we stay the same, which I'm, I'm for. Now, we bring this tall, town hall meeting. We let the public express their comments and so forth, but now how does that work? We have, have people saying, you know, okay, yes, I, I'm, I'm for us raising taxes because this is what we can do. And then you have the other one saying, well, no, because of whatever reasons. How do, now we decide based on what the people are telling us, is that how it works?
That's usually the way it should work.
Okay, so now, so again, so we're trying to tell our people, the ones that don't want to raise taxes, bring as many people as you can to the meeting.
Sure.
And then the other ones also, we know we need to do it, so that's basically the way it's gonna work.
Absolutely.
The, the thing about it is that the people, if you don't present them something and have some charts where they can see it, they can picture and visual what they're talking about. And when they see the value, they'll see what, you know, we did in the school district, that, you know, they passed, uh, four hundred, uh, million dollars of bonds when I was there in eight years. But we told the public, hey, this is what we're gonna do, and Dr. King has continued to invite people and say, here's where your money went to. So we gotta look at our city and say, hey, this is the presentation that we have, if you're forward, great. If they say they don't want it, we respect their opinion. They are the taxpayers. But, but if you don't present something to them and where we're going, their benefits, both, you know, it's just up in the air, and we're imagining my taxes are already high and they're gonna continue going higher, you know? The, the holes are gonna be bigger and bigger because we're not gonna catch up, but at least.
Difference between the district and us is that we're already the highest, or one of the highest taxing entities in the valley. And so by increasing it even more, we are gonna be the highest, and, and I think that's why they're tired of paying taxes, so.
No, and, 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 and I, I understand what you're saying, Ma- Commissioner, but you gotta understand also, so, show them the picture, those, don't, you know, right now, in their mind, they cannot ex- see what we're gonna accomplish with that.
And I understand that. Now, we also have to be financially responsible, because if we didn't have the money, we didn't have the two million to build that police station, we would have gone, we should have. we would have gone, we should have gone with what we could afford. Not go with two million and then now pass up, pass the buck.
But you know, that, that police station is collecting that money in part, but most of it's going from there.
Part of it.
And, and you need a police station to both sides.
We adjusted a substation at the time.
It is a substation, sir.
It's a substation, it's not that big.
It's the same when you approved?
Not a two million.
The only thing that happens in those two millions is that with that money, you cannot cover a parking lot. So that's initially, you got to provide it and it's expensive.
And, and all the furniture and all.
Well, yeah, but most of the furniture is coming from the old furniture they had.
Now.
They're going to try to be salvaged, you know, so you got to continue.
Yeah. We can come back on the events also and freeze the events.
Yeah, and get the EDC to work as we should have. You know, I think that Chief is actually getting a great amount of money from forfeiture. And so the fact that we're getting a substation for seven hundred thousand for our citizens is pretty incredible. And I think that not taking that opportunity to get it done now, we're not going to see those same amounts in a year from now. And if you walk into the investigator's rooms, they're sitting on each other's lap. They're way over, crowded. And it's not because we want something to look better, it's because it's just needed. And if you talk to our officers about kind of their spaces that they have, they're, we've got officers in closets. So, I mean, that thing, when it was built, was, was too small already. And I think to lose an opportunity to get something for seven hundred thousand and the monies that he, that they have diligently worked at and gotten for us is quite a bit for, quite a bit of a, a plus for the city. And it is a substation, it's not a police station. And if it got to be more, it's not because they wanted to put more, we actually brought it down some more. What PBK came up with. So I'd like to take action tonight. I'd like to plan a town hall meeting and let it be filled with people. I think that's the best. We can go to different parts of the city to get the people to come in. I'd like the engineer to have the streets calculations to the best of visibility of what it would be. Take it into account, anything else that we have looked at. I know Mr. Ponson talks about the swimming pool or a.
Flashpad.
Flashpad, the lights for the parks, the things that we just cannot do because we don't have the funding. And the people, once they know that, they'll know why we, we don't have that, you know? And so, and what we can get based on what we have. I think right now, we know that the priorities are streets. I don't think there's anything else that we hear more complaints. I think Ms. Gonzalez is doing a great job and has got an equipment to get the sanitation part done. And we have a sweeper and I think we're getting a few other equipment to be able to help manage some of that. So I'd like to make a recommendation to this commission that we adopt the existing tax rates and that we plan for a town hall meetings, at least a few, a couple, before we, we have, or four, whatever we can come up with on dates with a short notice.
Mr. Garza, and if you can get Mr. Vela in here as well.
Oh, that'd be great.
I will.
So I know that to make this motion, specific language, sir? And this one, or do we not?
Yes, taxes as is, right?
I think, I think it's on the agenda item.
Okay. Can you read me the language, sir?
Yes, there will be considered a post-tax rate for the city of San Juan year, beginning October first, two thousand sixteen to September thirty, two thousand seventeen, and setting the public hearings.
Okay, so the motion would be that the, that the, that the city adopt the effective rate of point, no, the existing rate of six point six nine nine three?
Right. And then to schedule the two public hearings.
And schedule two public hearings for Tuesday, August twenty-third, and a, the first hearing and second hearing on, on Tuesday thirtieth, twenty sixteen and six P M for both of them. And I'm going to take an individual poll. Commissioner, is there a motion to that effect?
No move.
All right. I'd like to go ahead and, and go by each one of you, Mr. Garcia. Your, is this a yes or a no?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Maldonado?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, all in favor state aye?
Aye.
This passes then. You'll let us know and we'll work on the public hearings.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. You all can continue working on the budget. All right, under our public hearings, to conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance in the first reading for rezoning requests from single-family residential district to neighborhood commercial district for a property legally described as Lot One, Las Brisas, the San Juan subdivision, located at the southeast corner of Raúl Longoria and Sylvia Circle as requested by Jose Maldonado. Mr. Cervantes.
Yes, Mayor City Commission, good evening. Mr. Maldonado is requesting a zoning change to neighborhood commercial district to either build a small business in the property or, or to sell the property with commercial zoning. The property was originally designed to be used for single-family residential purposes. However, because it is located along a major tour fair, being Raúl Longoria Road, a family is unlikely to want to build a house there. Presence has been established when the city zoned the property immediately to the south neighborhood commercial district in a, basically a replica, replica, replica property. The waterplex business is located there. The future business will generate property and sales taxes for the community. The planning and zoning commission met on July twenty-first and recommended unanimously in approval, in favor of the zoning change.
All right. I'd like to open this public hearing at seven seventeen. Are there any members of the public who have any comments for or against? Members of the public, for or against? If you can come forward, please state your name.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Mi nombre es Josefina Maldonado. La razón que queremos cambiar de zona, el solar, verdad, es porque queremos poner un negocio. Ya que es una área donde hay muchos negocios, verdad, muy productiva. Y queremos contribuir a la ciudad de San Juan, verdad, ya que vivimos en Alamo. Pero esa es una manera para seguir adelante, verdad, y quizás dar empleo a personas, verdad, un pequeño negocio, verdad, tampoco es un, verdad, pero el solar.
What type of business, Maldonado, is she anticipating that they're going to open?
Ah, como un, este, venta de cápsulas naturales, vitaminas.
They're going to construct an edificio?
Sí.
How many jobs do you think they're going to generate from this business?
Minimum cinco.
Very well. Gracias. Any questions for Ms. Maldonado, the property owner? Gracias, Ms. Maldonado.
Gracias.
Any other member of the public for or against? Any other member of the public for or against? Any member of the commission have any questions?
No, ma'am.
All right.
Are you in compliance with everything?
Okay, there's some questions. Mr. Commissioner Garcia?
Have you advised them of everything, we have to be in compliance with the city there?
Yes, yes. If you, if you look at the, in your packet, you have a list of businesses that will be, if the zoning goes through, you have a list of businesses that will be allowed outright by having the zoning. And then you also have a list of businesses that will be allowed through a conditional use permit. So all of that is listed in your packet. So the, the property, the Maldonados could keep it or they could sell it, right? And the, the commercial zoning will, will remain if the zoning goes through.
Mr. Cervantes, you mentioned about the curb cut, right? Now, in reading this, you also said that policies changed, that they may or may not allow the curb cut.
Yes, and I talked to officials from Techstat. And Techstat, they don't, they don't like curb cuts on Raúl Longoria. They, they, additional curb cuts create more conflicting points. So they, they don't like them. But that doesn't mean that they will not allow them. Techstat may allow it this year or may not. But also, the policy's changed, so if they don't allow it this year, in five years, they could allow it or vice versa because personnel changes, policies change, but.
So right now, they couldn't get a curb cut, could they?
Right now, they will not, they will not tell you. You have to submit a, a plan to them. And depending on the situation, on for waterplex, they allowed it. So on waterplex, you, you have a curb cut that lets you in and then you exit on Calle de Jardín. So for waterplex, which is a replica property, Techstat allowed it, but that was ten years ago. Policies change, personnel changes. So I cannot guarantee that they will get a, a curb cut.
We don't know at this time whether they're going to allow it or not.
No, but they do have access to Sylvia Circle.
So we should wait then, no? What, what, what do you?
No, no, because they, they're, Techstat will not give you any guarantees. You do not have to approve the zoning. We cannot adopt zoning with the condition. So zoning, you either approve it or you disapprove it. And if you don't feel that the property is suitable for commercial zoning, you don't have to approve it. But, no, no guarantees, no guarantees that Techstat will give you. But at least they have a Sylvia Circle that could be used to get in and out, yes.
Ms. Maldonado. May I come back? Do you understand English, Ms. Maldonado? Okay. The discussion, the question that Mr. Garza asked is if it will be allowed or if it can be allowed for the entrance to the property, Raúl Longoria. Right now, it's not known, you have to send the plan. And it's possible that they say yes, it's possible that they say no. Do you understand that? And the type of business that you are proposing, it's not the type that you need. I mean, it's possible that you just have to enter through the avenue of Sylvia Circle and not be able to leave for the avenue of Raúl Longoria, through there. Do you understand that? Okay. And in the plans, do you already have a plan of how it will be done or are you just looking for the, the change of zone?
Well, the plan, in, in.
Do you already have it figured out?
We have it figured out, but I don't have a plan with the architect, but more or less, we have it figured out for entering and leaving through the avenue of Sylvia.
Okay. More than you understand right now. If he says, if you ask for something for Raúl Longoria, you can ask, but it's very possible that it won't happen. Okay, so if you don't even contemplate that, well, there wouldn't be a problem with Techstat. But that's another thing that he said, it can be and it can't be. So, the space, how many parking spaces for the parking lot will require? I don't know in the plan that you are making.
Six?
Six? You've looked at this?
Five or six?
Five to six. What's, what's the size of the property?
It's a sixty by one hundred, it's a small property.
Small property. This is across from Memes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Maldonado, thank you. And what do you think about the, the traffic from the, both spilling into the same area?
I mean, it, it will generate a little additional traffic to Sylvia Circle. But it's, whatever goes in, there's going to be a small business, so it shouldn't generate a lot of traffic.
I guess it's, as long as that, that building remains small enough for all the setbacks, there's no.
It has to, it has to, because the setback in Raúl Longoria is twenty and then we're, we're going to require another twenty in the rear, so that leaves you twenty. Yeah, so the building will be small.
I mean, it's good, it's good commercial property to kind of match what's across the street and what's coming across, so.
Yeah, somebody building a house there is unlikely, so.
I don't think they would, yeah. It hasn't, it's been vacant for a long time.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? All right, did I, I'm going to close this public meeting at seven twenty-four. Is there a motion for approval as presented?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. Linda, I know I've made you wait a long time, but I've got Linda Fuentes, right? De la Fuentes, you can come forward from the MPO. This is regarding the next item under item seven A. Consider the resolution opposing the recent administrative efforts by the Texas Department of Transportation that no longer apply the economically disadvantaged county program to off-systems, non-Techstat roadways, transportation projects throughout the state and more specifically, the city of San Juan. This is something that we're not sure yet, but we have heard it through the pipes that it's a possibility that it might be eliminated. And so if you can just explain to the, to the members of the audience and the commission the percentage that we normally pay on projects that are, that are given, that are under the EDC?
Yes, the way that it usually works is that the EDC had been used to complement the twenty percent match participation for off-system projects that are funded through category seven, which is pretty much the category that it's available for MPO projects, not so much for Tech, Techstat, sorry. And usually, that equates to just one percent. That would be what the municipalities or the county would have to match instead of twenty percent. Now, we put that on the context of how much that would be in, in monies for the, what we call the Unified Transportation Plan, which is the ten-year plan that Techstat puts out. That gives us a window of how much the Hidal County can expect on category seven funding, which is the one that can be used for off-system. What we have so far in our plans, and this is based on the next amendment that will be submitted for the November revision for Techstat, we are talking about, about twenty-four projects that will be funded through category seven for the next ten years. And that equates to about a hundred and eighty million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. So what the twenty percent match on that would be, would be about thirty-six million, where normally, we will be talking about one point eight million. One point eight million is usually what would be the match, one percent match, instead of the twenty percent. So the twenty percent would be about thirty-six million. So it's a very significant increase. And what they are proposing right now for how to use the EDC instead of the way that it had been used is that they would try to use it for the right-of-way match, which would be the twenty percent, but only for on-system projects, which are the ones that are maintained by the state. They are not state highway systems. So it would benefit the, some of the communities on on-system projects that are not state highway projects, only for the right-of-way match. So we're talking about, it would help them to only put one percent for the right-of-way match. So the right-of-way expenses in comparison to the construction expenses are very small. So it is a significant increase. So we just wanted to make sure that we shared with everybody here how much that means. Now, I did a calculation for how many of those projects would be around the city of San Juan. Most of them are joined between city of San Juan, city of Far, maybe city of San Juan and Alamo. But I did find three projects that would affect this area in particular. One in year two thousand twenty-two, which would be Owasa, from US two eighty-one to Iroa. That one is estimated to receive five point five million of category seven funding. We have in year two thousand twenty-three, Cesar Chavez, from Business Eighty-three to Rich Road. That one is expected to receive about seven point six million of category seven funding. And then we, we do have in year two thousand twenty-six, Iroa, from Rancho Blanco to Military. And that one is expected to receive about ten million dollars. So this is three projects that would affect this particular jurisdiction. And that would equal about twenty-three million dollars, from which the city of San Juan, in conjunction with either the county or other cities, would have to put in four point six million dollars instead of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So it is a huge increase.
So what we're trying to do is go to, get the municipalities to approve this resolution and on the twenty-fifth, make a trip up with the Texas Commission and ask them to make sure that this doesn't pass. We're the ones that are probably impacted, impacted the most from any other part of the state. We're also working on a merger. And one of the things is that the, the levels of population are being moved up to a million as a proposal on some of the categories that's just been discretionary.
Yes.
That we've been able to take advantage of here. And so we want to make sure that if we're a merger, we will reach the one million if we were to merge with Brownsville and, well, Brownsville and San Benito and Harlingen. So that's one of the, the endeavors that we have right now at the MPO to try to get this whole valley region to get that kind of money.
That's correct.
To meet the one million so we can be up there with the top five MPOs. And without it, we just, it's what we're happening. We don't have the roadway, the money for roadways and to solve some of the congestion, so.
Yes.
We're advocating, and so we'll be traveling on the twenty-fifth.
Yes, and I believe that it was approved by Commissioner's Court this morning.
Okay, great. And there's other cities that have that already before them.
Against the EDC also.
So, so.
Yes.
Any questions? Thank you, Linda, for being present.
You're welcome.
I would appreciate that we get this resolution approved to present to the Texas Commission. Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
No move.
Is there a second? All in favor state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under item B, consider the discussion of projects for the Hidal County Urban County Program for year thirty, two thousand seventeen funds. Mr. Cervantes?
Yes, a month ago, I, I came before you for project ideas for the two thousand seventeen funds. We're going to have. We're going to have two hundred and fifty thousand, more or less, to work with.
Unless...
It should be about the same as, should be the same funding as the previous fiscal year. In 2016, we found, we, we had two hundred and fifty thousand that we used for street improvements. We can also do park improvements, utility lines. Different, there's a list of things that are eligible. And also you have a map that shows what areas of the city qualify. So basically, the, the areas in yellow in your map are the areas that qualify for, for projects. And I have a better map if you want a, a bigger, better, I have...
What streets are up there?
I have a bigger, better map that I can give you.
Can you show that to us?
Like the splash park, that is a project that we, has been discussed that as a potential project that could be funded through these, through these funds or continue with street improvements. If you want a street improvement with, we don't have to decide today, but we, we would like a decision, maybe in the next meeting or the one after that at the latest, because we have to get engineering estimates. The deadline is October, but I need to get engineering estimates submitted, and so that takes a little bit of time.
Of course, we do, from this amount of two fifty, we do the...
The different centers that we will buy.
The centers, the other agencies that we help.
Well, yeah, last, last year we got two eighty-three and then we used like twenty-three thousand for the social agencies. And then we, we had two hundred and fifty thousand for, for infrastructure. So if we get the same level of funding from 2016 and if we fund the, the social agencies the same, we're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand that we have for infrastructure.
Where's Sunset Street on here? Would it fall under that category? It's off of Raúl Longoria.
Which one?
Sunset Street.
Sunset.
It's a clear map, but those, those letters are really tiny.
Which one is it?
It's, um...
The one with the cul-de-sac? Just the one income back?
It's a one, yeah.
Right?
It have no, no drainage, no... It's a one, standalone. Well, take a look at it, see if it falls within that, within the yellow, the yellow area. Because it might be that we identify a specific item on the engineer's list that could be addressed, and that would be in the year twenty seventeen, that would be approved. Our ratios are good right now?
Once, we have the Soreline project in the works right now in downtown. We're going to be paving those same streets.
Yes.
Like in two, three months, you're going to see the repaving of those streets. Once, once the repaving is done, we're going to be in real good shape on the ratio, because we're going to have two big projects out of the way and we're, we're going to be in great shape for the ratio once this, once these two projects are done.
Good.
What, what disqualifies you?
It's the income.
The income on the household?
It's they, it's based on the census. So they get, they get information from the census on what the average family makes. So based on that, they, they have the city divided into areas. And so based on that information, you have the areas in orange that do not qualify for those funds and then the areas in yellow that they do, they do qualify. If you, if, if street improvements is what you would like to do, for the next meeting, we could give you from the, from the list of the, from the engineer, the serious and critical, we could give you a list of the ones that will qualify.
Okay.
If that's what you...
I think that would be good.
Yes. We can highlight and bring it back to you. And if there, we'll take it into consideration, the Sunset. Because that's the one that goes in and it has like a cul-de-sac and comes back, right? I'm looking for it here.
And of course, for the, we'll have those figures and we'll also have anything else that we've discussed in the, the budget that is not within, that is not within, I know there's some of the projects we talked about, the parks and recreation. Bringing those in and let's just take a look at all of them. And it'd be great to have them during our town hall meeting as well. All right, so you don't need an action from us right now, right?
No, if you like, you can, we can table, table the item and then...
And then you'll provide us that information?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to table this item?
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. It'll be table till next time.
I know that's after this, my mayor, but I was going to make, just to, maybe somebody can answer it. Because I had a taxpayer today say that we don't have no money, but we're demolition, the sidewalk and clover and that. It's part of the funding.
The grants.
Yeah, it's a grant, so.
And it's not through the CDBG, it's actually through, what is it Chanel, the actual Valley Metro? It's because it's connected to the station where folks pick up Valley Metro. So all the work that's being done on First Street and along Nebraska is through a grant. And our matching is just in-kind.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, because I did get a taxpayer today tell me, we don't have money for the city, but you're destroying the sidewalk.
Make sure you call them, I can tell them it's a grant.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that the public knows that.
Absolutely.
That it's a grant and it's not being paid by the city.
Yeah. Yes, it was. We don't have to, liability-wise, I think we're doing a lot of good there. And it's going to look really, really nice. Yes. Okay, going on to item C. Consider adoption of inter-local agreement with the Far San Juan Independent School District towards the construction of a deceleration lane along East Sam Houston Avenue in front of Sorenson Elementary. Mr. Cervantes.
Back when the Sorenson School was built, back in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, the, the school district was required to provide additional paving along Sam Houston, but because phone lines were in the way, the, the school district could not do it back, back then. Now the phone lines are out of the way. And the, the county is helping the school district get the, get the additional paving in place, but the funding has to be through the city. The, the school district is going to give the funding to the city and the city is going to turn around and use the money to pay the, the county.
All right, are there any questions? Not as there a motion for approval as presented?
Second.
All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, D, consider authorizing the chief of police to enter inter-local cooperation contract between the city of San Juan and Texas School Safety Center of Texas State University in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty seventeen tobacco enforcement program. Ms. Borrego.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Texas State University and Texas School Safety Center is offering us a Texas tobacco enforcement program. It'll reimburse the city seventy-five dollars for each sting operation that's conducted. We'll be conducting thirty at sting operations between September first and August thirty-first. We've been in this program for, since two thousand and fourteen, and we never had any issues. So we just need to re-approve the agreement.
Very good. And chief, this is the one where we've got folks going undercover and... I'm sorry, Chanel, I was looking at...
Yes, mayor, this is one of the state programs and projects that we are a hundred percent and a hundred and ten percent behind it. And this city, San Juan Police Department, has been one of the most agencies recognized around the state that we are focusing on trying to make sure that our kids don't, don't consume tobacco and stuff like that. And we do address it with our businesses. We haven't had any issue with the businesses when we do the undercover works of that and we, we let them know that our priority is going to be long-term, it's not short-term. So, you know, we have good feedback from the businesses and we just want to make sure that the message gets to them.
Very good, thank you, chief. Any questions?
You can give seventy-five dollars back, chief? Is that what it?
Yes, seventy-five dollars per sting operation.
What is the cost?
Um, to conduct a sting operation?
Yeah.
We get a total of about three thousand or so. So we ourselves have our police explorers and some, some young youth that we designate and classify so they can go and be able to do that work. But it doesn't cost us, the only thing that costs us is getting the personnel, because we also get funded through other grants as well.
There are questions, is there a motion for approval?
A move.
Is there a second? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, same sign, motion carries. Next item is consider authorizing the chief of police to enter into memorandum of understanding between the San Juan Police Department and the constituent agency, the Texas Anti-Gang Center, Rio Grande Valley.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner, I wanted to give you a little bit of history on how this all began. And I, I'm very proud of our, our department and our gang unit. Back in two thousand and nine, we started a, we applied for a grant from the state and we created what we call a Gang Scope Unit that targets gangs in the PSDAs area, specifically in San Juan. We've done a great job on that, trying to reduce the crime on gang activity. So we got to grant-funded. So that was a catalyst to what is now the RGV Tag Unit, which is representing the whole Rio Grande Valley. We are the first agency that partnered up with the Texas Department of Public Safety to create this RGV Tag here, which is the Rio Grande Valley Anti-Gang Unit that is being operated, it's going to be operated by the Texas Department of Public Safety. The other one close to us is in the Houston metro area. And this is, we have assigned a, a gang task force officer to the gang unit. And we have been able to be part of a lot of these gang arrests throughout the Rio Grande Valley. And our gang unit, Gang Scope Unit, has been recognized by the state and also by other law enforcement agencies. But one of the major things is that we focus is that not only our gangs' problem has diminished tremendously in San Juan, but we're helping other entities in other counties do the same thing. Like we are very active in Star County and we have helped with a lot of issues over there in Star County as well. But this gang unit is going to be housed in, in McAllen, city of McAllen. The old police department from McAllen, they're being converted. They got, they received from grant-funded from the state with a transnational intelligence center. And the RGV Tag Unit, and we're one of six agencies right now in the Rio Grande Valley, they're going to partake in that. And we're very proud that we have been able to be a part of that. Now, the positive side besides the criminal enforcement on it is that this is another opportunity for asset forfeiture sharing. And I'm all about that. You know, since two thousand and nine, this department has received over two point two million dollars in asset forfeiture sharing. And by allowing us to continue to partake in this type of operations, the type of units, allows us to continue to do that. Target the criminal element, target the gang activity in different areas. And also, in return, the city will benefit if there's any asset forfeiture sharing. So, you know, it's something that we're very proud of from my standpoint.
You seen a decline, chief?
Yes, ma'am. I can tell you in the, in the San Juan area, we have seen a tremendous decline since we started this unit. And we also focus on the summer program, when the kids are out in the summer. We have what we call a jet officer, juvenile enforcement team, which is an officer and an investigator. They go around talking to juveniles involved in property crime. In the summer, we, sometimes we see a spike in property crime. So we make sure that we contact the parent, we visit the parent, we let them know your ju, your son or daughter's been involved in property crime. We are monitoring them. Because once they're off school, we want to make sure that they don't get recruited by our local street gangs. So we focus on that. So that's why, that's part of our Gang Scope Initiative as well that we have year-round. That's in the summer breaks, that's after schools and so forth. So we've seen a tremendous, you know, reduction on that. And our goal is threefold, is just to displace them, to disrupt them and to dismantle them. And we've done that here in this area.
Chief, this gang unit, it's one officer assigned to it?
Yes, we do have one officer assigned. And that's, right now it's being housed at, at Texas DPS in Wesaco, that's the headquarters. But in two thousand and eighteen, depending on the construction of that new, how it goes, we're, we're, we're hoping that all the gang unit, RGV Tag unit is going to be housed out of that transnational intelligence. It's a combined effort, it was grant-funded a couple of years ago. The state created the Transnational Intelligence Center. And with that, attached to it is a component of targeting gangs and be part of that.
Now, now, is the salary paid by this grant or, or...
Right now, no, no, Mayor Protem, right now we are paying it, but we're paying, the salary we're paying through the city, but all the overtime is being paid, paid through board of staff grants. So the officer is getting paid through our, that's the only thing that is not being allocated right now through this, through this state-funded program that they receive. So the salaries are not being paid from the different agencies.
Chief, do you, do you appoint the officer or does people apply for it and your department?
Oh, yes, it's, it's every position in the police department, every position from top to bottom is, is through a selection process. And our supervisor staff selects who is the best candidate for it. So once they do that, whoever gets assigned to a task force or special crime, a unit outside the agency or even inside the agency that deals with their, you know, integrity issues, they go through a polygraph, drug testing, a financial background, and they go through a criminal history check as well.
Very good, chief. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, ma'am.
Chanel, did you need to add anything to any of that?
Yeah, I just, mayor, I just want to say that Chanel has been a tremendous asset to the city of San Juan and the police department.
Totally agree.
And I applaud her for everything she's done for us. She has kept me out of trouble through all these grants. Thank you, Chanel.
Appreciate the words, chief, and I, we agree. Is there a motion for approval as presented?
A move. Second.
All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. F, consider authorizing the city of San Juan to enter into memorandum of understanding between the San Juan Memorial Library, Texas State Library and Archives Commission regarding a twenty seventeen Family Place Libraries Grant. Chanel?
Yes, the Texas State Library and Archives Commission is providing tuition for two staff members from San Juan Memorial Library to attend the Family Place Libraries training on November fourteenth through the seventeenth in New York. The onsite training provides information and guidelines for establishing a specially-designed children's area for young children and their caregivers. Tuition will cover the cost of hotel, training and food served during the training seminar. The grant tuition will not cover the cost of flight, rental car or food per diem outside training time. Mrs. Seán has already been budgeted for the per diem in her two thousand sixteen travel line item budget, so that's been taken care of for. After they attend the meeting, they'll then be given a sub-grant of six thousand dollars, which will be used to purchase children's, items for the children's area, which includes books, toys, music, multimedia materials for babies, toddlers and parents and caregivers. There's no match required other than obviously covering her per diem.
Excellent. New York, Thomas Seán?
Take a lot of blankets.
All right. Is there a motion for approval?
A move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Borrego. Moving on to the consent agenda under a budget expenditure report as of June thirtieth, twenty sixteen. Monthly collection report is of June thirtieth, twenty sixteen. Are there any that need to be pulled? I just have a general question, Mr. Garza, on the expenditures. I know, I looked at those, really, I don't see anything significantly difference that happened. Everybody seems to be staying within budget. And I'd like to, now that we have the June numbers and we only have like a quarter left, we'll be able, do you believe, to put some money into the reserve fund?
If you know...
Most everybody seems to be within...
On the general fund, we're, we actually have one point three million on revenues. That's the actual year-to-date, right? But since our property taxes are going down and that's actually our main source of revenue, we need to keep those one point three as our reserve.
Sure.
On the next two months, three months. Right? I believe that we can actually put some money back.
Great.
Right? One hundred, two hundred thousand. But hopefully it's going to be like that. We're going to revisit the financial spread in, in August between me and Mr. Arjona.
Okay.
And see if we really need to have the option to do an amendment, which I don't think that's going to be the case, but we still need to review it like that.
We expect not to be the case.
Correct.
And some are under, under, quite a ways under expenditures. And so that's where we probably would be able to capture some of that. Very good. Yeah, you've been keeping a really good eye on it, I appreciate it, Mr. Garza.
All right, thank you.
Is there a motion for approval as presented?
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor state aye.
Aye.
A motion carries. We'll now enter into executive session. We have our folks from Ramon Garcia's office present. Okay, we will go into executive session under chapter five-five-one of the Government Code, Private Consultation with Attorney Regarding Litigation on Water Tower. And B, five-five-one point zero-seven-one, Legal Issues Regarding Intergovernmental About Hike and Bike Trail Counsel. Thank you. I do want to state that item B, it's been resolved and with the help of our county judge. So there's no issue on that one. It is seven forty-nine.